Hello, everybody. We're just letting people join up here. We'll get started at 2 o'clock.
Apparently it's coming up.
Okay, so I'm just looking through the list here. I'm seeing Jacob Man. Kinsey. Lauren. It's like Max is here. Trinity is here. Belicea is here. All right, I don't know if anybody is talking to Faith on the phone, but she was wanting to finish up her presentation on John Locke. Looks like Scott is gonna have a presentation on Lysler's Rebellion coming up and Max is here. So Max, are you ready for Salem Witchcraft Trials?
Yeah, I mean, it's been like a month since I've researched it.
All right, well, you know, get your memory refreshed real quick here. And then Nathan Dark is also supposed to do Salem Witchcraft Trials. So if anybody is talking to him over the phone, you might want to say, hey, you're you're gonna be up today pretty quick here if you have a chance and can join us. Get pulled up to the. Okay. All right, just like one more minute, we'll be getting started here. Elizabeth's joining us. There's Faith, right? Okay, so we are going to get started. It is 2 o'clock. Welcome, everybody. And we were in the middle of a discussion on John Locke in both classes and Faith. You were in the middle of your presentation, so I have a tendency to really kind of go on about John Locke, so I'm gonna try to control myself and let you talk. So Faith, do you want to pick up where you left off?
Uh, yeah, I can do that.
All right, great. So go ahead.
So last time I talked about the social contract with that and how all men have their own natural rights. And how, but with that own way, he believed that all men are nature and free and equal, but he said that God had made it so that all people are naturally subject to a monarch.
Okay, so, and I think those are important distinctions. But can you expound a little more on the whole natural rights given by God? So yes, he is agreeing with Hobbes that that a monarch is the best form of government, one man with all the power. But he does differ when he says that there should be some limits on that power. So, and those directly tie into the natural rights that we were just discussing. So how how should the monarch be limited when it comes to these God-given natural rights, these inalienable rights, as they would later be called?
Well, that goes back into the the social contract where it was if both sides had their own side that they had to live up to. So each party had an obligation to the other, like the people had to be loyal to the monarch and the monarch had to be a good leader for the people. And he said that if any other part of that breaks it, then they're no longer protected by it. So that kind of goes in with that whole thing of, well, if the monarch sucks, then the people have a right to be able to, I guess, overthrow in a way. That's how I interpreted it anyway. And I have a quote from him that he said, every man has a property in his own person. This this nobody has a right to but himself. And that goes back into the right that he said about ownership of property. So he thought that no matter who you were, it didn't matter who you were, how you were born. You everyone had these certain rights that were life, liberty, and the ownership of property, which ties back into that quote that I said before.
Okay, so can let's just drill down on those three then real quick. So if he's saying you have a right to your life and the monarch, if the monarch violates this, then they're they're basically breaking the social contract. What what is that? What is your right to your life?
I guess in a way, I guess how I thought of it was you couldn't just be killed for no reason, like if the monarch just said, well, I didn't like how he looked at me, so I'm gonna kill him.
Right, yeah, like the monarch can't just like, you know, kill you because he doesn't like you. What do you have? What do you have to do in order to give the monarch the right to take your life from you?
I feel like it would have to be a crime that would be equal to needing the death penalty, like murder or.
Yes, excellent. Yeah, so you have to commit a crime. You have to violate your basic duties to society by, you know, doing something to somebody else that would merit the the monarch taking your life from you. On the same kind of token, what about liberty? What are we talking about there? What what is the monarch not allowed to do to people when it comes to liberty?
Well, this, before we talked about the English Bill of Rights, how everyone had the rights of free speech and other stuff like that, no punishment until proven guilty, et cetera, et cetera.
And those are critical liberties, but I'm, let's just focus on liberty in general, like, you know, your liberty as a person. What are we talking about there? Your your ability to just kind of be free and not be in what?
I suppose subject to just base tyranny.
Well, yeah, and be in prison, right? Like if if the monarch throws you in prison, then obviously he has taken your liberty from you. You you do not have freedom. So, and of course, you know, they're going to go where you were just going with this eventually with, you know, civil liberties. But let's just focus on that that first basic liberty, which is just your liberty of movement, your liberty of freedom. Along the same lines, what can't the monarch do to you unless you do blank?
I guess he can't imprison you unless you've been convicted of a crime.
Boom, okay. And that is that is so huge, because that was a weapon that monarchs had, a tyrannical weapon, you know, like I'm just gonna have my soldiers throw you in prison, throw you in a dungeon, you know, that that there was always that fear. And John Locke is saying, we we can't let this, we have to limit the power of the king in this area because it's it's too easy to abuse, I guess. And then your third, your third point is property, and you did drill on that a little bit, but let's just kind of look at that along the same lines. What can't the monarch do to a person unless they have done blank?
They can't take your home away from you unless, I guess, for example, you didn't pay like the debts for it. You didn't pay for it, I suppose, in a way. If you, like, your bill collector said, hey, this person hasn't been paying their mortgage or whatever, then he's like, oh, well, crap, we gotta put him in debtor's prison.
Right, you can't, they can't confiscate your wealth, whether it be your home or, you know, like, a large amount of money you have in a bank account or your your livestock in your fields or whatever it may be, the monarch can't just summarily just take your property from you. So this is kind of saying, we're gonna put some limits on the king so he can't be tyrannical. Very important concept, huge. It's gonna have long-reaching consequences. So go ahead and continue. Sorry to kind of interrupt, but that I just wanted to emphasize that thing that you were just talking about there.
Yeah, of course. He lived from 1632 to 1704. He believed that men by our nature, men are by nature free and equal against claims that God made it made that all people are subject to a monarch like I discussed about earlier. He was an English philosopher and physician and widely regarded as one of the most influential of the Enlightenment thinkers, if I remember correctly. Didn't weren't a lot of his philosophies used as a base in the French Revolution as well, a lot of people. Yeah, because going back to his rite of revolution, which goes back into the social compact or social contract.
Right, and and the French Revolution is going in many ways to take its inspiration from the American Revolution where, you know, like Locke's words are used in the Declaration of Independence as a basis for breaking the contract with the king without being just considered a bunch of traitors, you know. Like, they were saying, hey, we actually have a right here because this this king has violated the social contract, which real in reality, it's more Parliament, but Parliament is is siding with the king because the king has gotten a bunch of people on his side. Just in terms of his party in Parliament, did you find anything on what is this guy more of a Tory? Is he more of a wig?
I did not find anything on that.
And just just, you know, that's just one of those little esoteric details. It's not really that important, but I just wanted to mention, he has a pretty prominent wig. So people who, yeah, people who are kind of anti-king like to quote him. All right, and then you you already mentioned this, but I just want to make sure I emphasize emphasize this for everybody to hear. So everybody knows that this is incredibly important. You need to, you know, remember this thing that Faith said, and that is this this idea of the right of revolution. So if, like you said, it's like a contract, both sides have to keep up their end, or you can basically say, hey, so and so was in breach of contract. And so the he he kind of puts out this idea that the people have this right to break the contract with the king if the king has breached his side, where where the king is basically violating these rights to life, liberty, and property. So if you could make a case for that, you could say, hey, the king is in breach of contract. Therefore, we have the right to revolt against the king and not be considered traitors in the eyes of the world. Okay, so so important. And of course, this is all, you know, tailored towards, you know, you have to remember that John Locke is living in the middle of the Glorious Revolution. He is a wig. He is one of the people who helps write the English Bill of Rights, and he is one of the people who kind of gets that whole, you know, revolution going and removes a king in favor of another king. But this is this is incredibly important. So I just want to throw this question out there to anybody who is wanting to answer it. When we say that the idea of the consent of the governed is really important, and this goes back to Locke, what do we mean by the whole consent of the governed thing? And by the way, I noticed that in my sixth block, a lot of people have learned how to use the raising hand function. So if if you if somebody jumps in and you don't want to, like, interrupt them, you're you're being polite, but you still want to say something, just hit that raising hand function and I'll be able to see it on the participants' list here. Anybody want to chime in on the whole consent of the governed question? What is what does that mean? It's really, I'm not asking something too complex here. Yeah, go ahead, Zach.
So kind of like that. I guess I was kind of thinking this about the other day, like, kind of the way that we have it where you vote on who the president, like, you give you you vote that person into power. And at the time, it was still monarchs and everything, but that like, if the people don't want you, they can replace you, kind of like how we have elections. And I guess at his time, you were talking about the the right to revolution, so they would just revolt against the king. If that, to be to be governed, you have to allow it's the citizen, it's the citizens' right to kind of choose whether you have the power over them or not.
Excellent. Yeah, that I mean, that pretty much hits it. Elizabeth, what would you want to add to that?
The only thing I'd really add to that is, to me, it almost seems like, not really a threat to the monarch, but it's just kind of something to keep the monarch in line. You know, we can strip you of your power if you're not just.
Yeah, and I think that's an excellent addition to this. So we're getting to the point here in history where people are saying, you know, hey, you know, we don't really necessarily subscribe to the whole divine right of kings like we used to. The Catholic Church is is losing its influence. And the whole Hobbesian view, yeah, we agree, you know, that that somebody needs to impose order. But that person, you know, better watch it. There's there's certain areas where they they're just not allowed to go, you know, just because you have all power doesn't mean you can kind of, quote unquote, abuse that power. So excellent discussion on Locke. And so his treatise on his two treatises on government are going to be out there. Our founding fathers, many of them are going to have access, you know, to kind of libraries of books. Jefferson's Library, of course, would be famous. It would become the Library of Congress. He would donate it, and it would become the basis of their collection. But they're well-revoked, of our founding fathers in the and Faith, did you, you have your mic on? Did you want to add anything?
I had a couple more things that Locke talked about.
Yeah.
A while back, I did send you a video on it, but I feel like that might have been a while back and I didn't.
I'll search your name real fast. So go ahead and mention that while I do that.
Okay, he believes in this thing that was called the Theory of Mind, and he said that your mind was a blank slate. He called this the tabula rasa. And it became filled with knowledge through experience, observation, and experimentation. So he didn't think that some people were just born a certain way. He thought that you were only that only happened to you through your experiences. And he was really tolerant of other religions, which is kind of surprising for that time. He didn't think it was right to force people into one religion. He said it wouldn't have the desired effect due to the violence, but he was against atheism because he thought that if people weren't subject to a higher power, it would just be complete and utter chaos.
Okay, yeah, they would, they would have a moral compass, so to speak. Yeah, the whole tabula rasa thing, there is a debate going on in the Enlightenment about the nature of the mind, the nature of the soul, like, what are we, you know, there's there's all these great philosophers who are kind of weighing in, you know, and and that's a lot of that's AP Euro, because that's all, the European powers are kind of, people within them are slowly breaking away from this whole, you know, Catholic Church worldview and are starting to establish an independent worldview. And of course, these great thinkers are kind of all positing, you know, those those timeless questions about the nature of the of the mind, the nature of the soul. And so John Locke actually does make some contributions in that area as well. Again, we don't focus on that in AP US just because we're not, we're not focusing on that, but you have these these great universities that during the Reformation in the 1500s, well, but, you know, before they had been training grounds for priests, but during the Reformation, they become kind of freed of the of the control of the Catholic Church, and you have these scholars who are just putting out ideas. And then other people in other universities are putting out different ideas, and they're kind of, you know, having this this academic combat between, you know, people over these, you know, these these timeless questions that used to be decided by the church, but now we're kind of up in the air. Anybody could, like, you know, decide them. And so, yeah, that's an excellent point that you're bringing up as well, kind of a whole nother side to Locke that we don't normally talk about in AP US. Let me play your video real fast, and if you have anything else to add, I will happily allow you to continue.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
John Locke was a hugely influential.
Is this a, do we want to go the whole five minutes here, or can we do like a certain part of it? Are you, is there like a certain?
We don't have to go through the whole five minutes. It's basically kind of recapping what I've already addressed.
Okay, well, we'll see. It looks like political philosophy here. Okay. All right, we'll see. We'll kind of look and see what.
English philosopher of the 17th century, whose ideas, particularly in the realm of political philosophy, are still hugely relevant today. Born in 1632, Locke is an important figure of the early European Enlightenment. And certainly, many of his ideas had a considerable influence on later major Enlightenment thinkers, such as Immanuel Kant, David Hume, and Jean-Jacques Rousseau. Since he was such a polymath, he wrote and thought on an extremely broad range of interests. This talk focused on his contributions in three main areas: epistemology, political philosophy, and religious toleration. Firstly, epistemology. Locke, following in the tradition of the likes of Francis Bacon, was an empiricist. Indeed, probably his best-known work, An Essay Concerning Human Understanding, 1689, is one of the first great defenses of empiricism and concerns itself with determining the limits of human understanding in respect to a wide spectrum of topics. As he argues, no man's knowledge here can go beyond his experience. It thus tells us in some detail what one can legitimately claim to know and what one cannot. Linked to this is Locke's so-called Theory of Mind, which is often cited as the origin of modern conceptions of identity and the self. Locke was the first to define the self through a continuity of consciousness, arguing that the mind was a tabula rasa, a blank slate, which became filled with knowledge deriving from experience, observation, and experimentation. This was in contrast to the pre-existing Cartesian philosophy, which stated that we are born with innate ideas. Secondly, political philosophy. Locke's writings on political philosophy should be considered against the volatile and often violent background in Britain in the second half of the 17th century.
Okay, yeah.
The Civil War, the establishment of the Commonwealth, the restoration of the monarchy, the Glorious Revolution, and the advent of the Bill of Rights, where the supremacy or sovereignty of Parliament, as opposed to the monarchy, was finally established. Locke's most important political work, Two Treatises of Government, was published in the same year as the Bill of Rights, although Locke had written it much earlier. In it, he shows himself to be strongly against absolutism, in contrast to Hobbes, and in favor of the separation of church and state. Locke's political philosophy was deeply influenced by social contract theory and can be very briefly summarized as follows.
Okay, and this is all stuff that we've covered, it looks like, but that's an excellent little kind of intro to Locke and his and some of the stuff that we didn't cover as much. I would love to just keep going on and on about Locke, but did you have anything else that you'd want to add, Faith?
I just had two quotes, and that's it.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, he said, the only defense against the world is a thorough knowledge of it.
Okay.
And the second quote, which I addressed earlier, was every man has a property in his own person. This nobody has a right to but himself.
All right, all right, so that is a pretty good, you know, coverage of what I would say are all the important points that are necessary to know for this class on John Locke. So just remember that he is incredibly influential. All right, and that takes us to Lysler's Rebellion. And so Scott, this was you.
Yeah.
All right, so go ahead and and give us kind of your your summary, and then I'll ask some questions as you go there.
All right, so pretty much the people in England weren't the only one who hated King James II. And King James II had the idea of making the Dominican of New England. And he didn't fully complete the process of making it like one big area, but he did make some progress. And he put Sir Edmund Andos as the leader of that. And Edmund Andos was already pretty unpopular. He was the governor of New York from 1674 to 1681, and people despised him. So when he got put to a higher position, they were not happy about that whatsoever. Um, so, yeah, the people weren't happy.
So who's Jacob Lysler? Yeah, we did talk about the the Dominion of New England and Andros and how that almost took place. So Andros is, so we have to kind of go back a little bit, right before the Glorious Revolution, kind of in your thinking. Who is Lysler and what does he do in relation to the royal governor?
Well, eventually, when the Great Revolution happens, he's going to, him and a mob are going to take over for James and overthrow Lieutenant Governor Francis Nicholson. And after that, he was in charge in independent New York, and he implemented legislation that wouldn't put the rich over the poor, which would be huge in later years. And, yeah, he set up this new government, made things a lot more equal.
So he's kind of a proto-Burney, kind of a an early, you know, let's let's have economic justice kind of guy, but go ahead.
So he did that. And then eventually, William of Orange, when he got power in England, he implemented a new governor, and Lysler was like, nah, I like this position. So he resisted. And eventually, the rebellion got defeated, and Lysler and his son Jacob Milburn were hung in the public square for insurrection and treason. And what his rebellion stood for would be remembered for years to come, and especially how he put equality between the upper and lower class would be remembered.
Yeah, and again, why do we call, why do we cover these various little rebellions that take place? What's eventually going to happen in the colonies that's going to, you know, these are all going to kind of be seen as forerunners to.
Yeah, the American Revolution.
Right, there's going to be a rebellion. So again, these kind of things show that within the colonies, there is this this spirit among people where they feel like, you know, they can, you know, if they if they don't agree, they can take over and run their own affairs. And Lysler is is kind of another one in a series of people who who do that until, you know, like, along with Nathaniel Bacon and others we've talked about, until we get to, you know, the Big Revolution. And of course, you know, people see this as as a as kind of part of the the spirit of these these colonists, you know, where they're out struggling against the wilderness and they, you know, they they just decide, you know what, you can't tell me what to do. I'm gonna do it my way. So yeah, and if there's anything else I wanted to mention on this, or if I wanted to ask any questions, not, yeah, I can't think of anything. Did you have any quotes, videos, pictures, anything that you want to share?
I just emailed you a video that kind of covered the brief summary.
All right. So let me find that real fast. You just emailed it, so it should be at the top of my email. There it is. Oh, yeah, it's one.
What was Lysler's Rebellion?
It's a period from 1689 to 1691, named for ardent Protestant and New Yorker Jacob Lysler, who revolted against English King James II after learning of the 1688 Glorious Revolution.
who revolted against English King James the Second after learning of the sixteen eighty-eight Glorious Revolution. Leisler had expected goodwill from the new king, William of Orange, but instead was accused of usurping power and was executed after the newly appointed governor arrived. I'm Eric Robinson, the Reference Assistant at the New York Historical Society.
All right, yeah, so um, that is Leisler's Rebellion. Um, again, kind of uh part of this, this long series of rebellions in America. We just, and again, Locke has just justified this and and people who read him are going to say, yeah, this, this, this justifies what I want to do. But we're, we're kind of hard to control over here. We're, we're, there, there is this, this kind of independent spirit that is developing in the colonies. Of course, a lot of that is part of that salutary neglect period where, you know, they just kind of let us do what we wanted. Um, uh, and we had to fend for ourselves and figure out how to make it in the, in the wilderness with the natives and all of that. Um, all right, so that takes us to the sixteen eighty-nine Protestant Revolution in Maryland. Um, and we mentioned this already, but uh, I wanted to kind of drill down on it a little bit more because it does, you know, there, there is more detail than what we mentioned before when we quickly kind of mentioned this when we talked about uh the Maryland slide. Um, uh, really, um, Maryland was a proprietary colony um in the hands of the Baltimore family. But more and more Protestants kept moving into the area. And so, um, the first concessions of the Catholic government to the Protestants were the Act of Tolerance, which was kind of like a religious freedom statute. Again, we, we look at that when we're looking at kind of the history of religious freedom. Um, and uh, that then they moved the capital to Annapolis. Uh, so there was kind of this tenuous peace in the sixteen fifties, but by the sixteen eighties, uh, it began to collapse because of um economics, really. And it was due to the falling price of tobacco, which had gone down in price by thirty percent since the sixteen fifties. And so, um, uh, this tension, which was kind of created by this economic angst uh that that was occurring, basically leads to an unsuccessful revolt in the sixteen seventies. And then after the Glorious Revolution, um, Lord Baltimore kind of falls out of favor because he fails to um proclaim the new sovereigns, um, William and Mary quickly enough, which makes people wonder if he was sympathetic to the old Catholic, you know, pro-Catholic guy, James the Second. And of course, you know, anybody who is pro-Catholic is kind of falling out of favor at this point. And so, um, uh, his messenger, which had been sent to the royal court, had died before he had gotten there. And of course, this meant that, you know, he was conspicuously not uh announcing, you know, the, the new king uh in England when everybody else was. And uh, it made him look bad. Uh, and so the crown uh decided to seize the colony. Uh, it no longer was a proprietary colony at that point. And in, while all of this was happening, Protest in England, Protestant rebels uh led by a guy named John Cood had defeated the Catholic government in um a battle and basically uh took over the colony. Um, but eventually, a new royal governor named Nehemiah Blackiston would would take office in sixteen ninety-one and would kind of um, you know, become the, and and so the Catholics under Henry de Mol, the, the Catholic governor Henry de Mol had been defeated. So uh, that is the Protestant Revolution in Maryland. Um, and you know, I, I feel like this one's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, don't have any, uh, if, if anybody has a question they'd like to ask, they're, they're welcome to, but we're just gonna move on to the
I got it. I got a question.
Uh, question.
All right, I have a couple of questions. Yes, go ahead. Lauren, your favorite, and then Nick, and then Zach. So.
Um, I was just wondering if there was any background about the Nehemiah Blackiston?
Nehemiah Blackiston, um,
Yeah.
Uh, pretty much like that would be like one of those areas where I, I just don't have like the detailed knowledge uh because he is, you know, just a, he's just a choice by the royal governor. He's somebody that, you know, people in England said, oh, he would be a good pick. And so he gains favor and and gets picked to become the new royal governor.
No, I wasn't sure if there was anything like, whether he was chosen or he took upon it himself or anything like that.
No, good question though, but no, there's nothing, you know, significant that really kind of points to him as being, you know, this, this, this new choice that would be a good choice. Nick, go ahead. What was your question?
I know that um the economic kind of like crisis kind of like stimulated the angst and the fighting that occurred, but like, what was the main reasons that, or like the main differences that the Protestants and the Catholics had again?
Um, the uh, the Catholics basically uh kind of ran things in a way that favored Catholicism and the original population, which again, uh, you know, Maryland did have an economic model that was similar to Virginia in a lot of ways. You know, they shared a border, shared similar climate. And so, um, it's sort of similar to what you saw in Bacon's Rebellion, where you had the poorer uh plantation owners who were trying to get going. And and back with Nathaniel Bacon, it was more, you know, Native Americans versus uh, um, you know, what you currently had was just was kind of the unfair uh economic advantages that those older families had, which of course, many of which were Catholic because they had gotten there first. Uh, so the Protestants felt like there was this, this kind of economic inequality that was being perpetuated by the uh um, the, the pro-Catholic government or the, you know, the original government, which was tied to the Baltimore family. So that, that's part of it, you know. Um, in many ways, you can see some similarities to what goes on nowadays with uh, with Bernie. Uh, and kind of like, hey, you know, those, those rich people, they have an advantage. They're keeping the rest of us from, from doing well. Um, you know, very similar, but not, I mean, they weren't advocating socialism or anything. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, thank you.
All right, yeah, no problem. And then there was somebody else, uh, who was it?
I was just gonna ask what Nick asked, but you already answered it, so.
Okay, cool. All right, so um, that takes us to the War of the Grand Alliance. Again, this is AP Euro, okay? This is all Louis XIV uh getting strong, you know, pushing against everybody else in Europe. Uh, we're not going to spend a great amount of time kind of getting into all the weeds on this, but um, I'll just kind of give you a, a quick summary because really what we want to focus on in AP US is the war in the colonies that is a, a mirror of this war. Uh, and so basically, Louis XIV is becoming very strong and powerful. Um, he had expelled the Huguenots. Uh, other Protestant powers within Europe were alarmed. Uh, again, England can be counted as Protestant power since they had rejected the Catholic Church uh and were Anglican. You had various Protestant uh nobles in what was once the Holy Roman Empire, but was like now a little patchwork of German kingdoms, Sweden. Uh, and some of the Nordic countries had uh become Protestant as well. And so they basically form a kind of anti-Catholic Protestant uh league known as the League of Augsburg to oppose the growing power of Louis, because everybody was afraid that Louis might, you know, become the champion of the Catholic Church and and reimpose Catholicism where they didn't want it imposed. Um, and so a lot of this, you know, flows out of the Reformation, but um, eventually, uh, you know, and and of course, Louis is also just wanting to reclaim lands. And, you know, again, this is way, this is AP Euro, this is going way back into the weeds, but there was an area that used to belong to France called Burgundy. And during the Hundred Years' War, there were two dukes that were like, kind of duking it out to be influential with a king who was losing his mind, King Charles the Mad. And um, the, the Duke of Burgundy lost out, and so he rebelled and became kind of a separate country, and that became the area which at first was the Austrian Netherlands and then was the Spanish Netherlands, but kind of was this area that will eventually become, you know, the Netherlands and France. And then it eventually, um, in the sixteen hundreds would get its independence, uh, part of it, the northern part, and that would become the Netherlands. Uh, and so, um, the Dutch were feeling all of this pressure because Louis was trying to reclaim their lands uh uh and wanted to um to, so part of the, the reason that England is in this alliance is because William and Mary have taken over uh and are now the monarchs of England, but of course, they still have a strong interest in defending the Netherlands. And so, um, this becomes kind of like a big, you know, European war. And actually, Spain joins their alliance because they're worried about the growing power of Louis. And um, even though they're Catholic, they are, they're basically betraying a fellow Catholic because they, they feel like he's getting too powerful. So that is um kind of a, a little bit of a nutshell of how this works. And then um, it, it, it's basically ten years of war and uh, nothing really changes hands too much. Uh, but there's, you know, um, land campaigns on five separate fronts, and that also includes um, a war in the colonies. So this is known as King William's War. Just, we call it that because uh, King William was the, the monarch of England at the time. And um, basically, uh, the French commander, um, uh, who is up in Quebec and noticed that France's uh area is blue, Britain's area is red, Spain is yellow, and then you've got some disputed territories on the borders in between. Um, he basically uh starts attacking French for, I'm sorry, English forts along the frontier. Um, and the uh, the most powerful blow lands on Chenactady, New York in sixteen ninety, um, prompting a counterattack. Um, and so the, the, the French had a um uh, a settlement right here called Port Royal. And so there was this, this, a counterattack by British colonists and the British forces in North America. The French continued to raid English settlements along the border here with their Native American allies. And when the War of the Grand Alliance ends in Europe, the King William's War ends in the colonies with the Treaty of Reiswick and um uh, everything goes back to the way it was. It's what we call status quo antebellum. Uh, everything returns to um the way it was before the war. So that is King William's War. And that takes us to a topic which both Nathan and um, uh, Max both have. So um, Nathan and Max, oh, and Olivia, did you have a question?
Um, yes, it was just, I was looking up King William's War for more context just now.
Yes.
And I saw somewhere where it combined King William's War and the Salem witchcraft trials. And I just wanted to know if they were like intermingled somehow.
Um, there is this heightened uh um, uh sensitivity to um, basically, uh, okay, this also goes back into AP Euro, but um, throughout the sixteen hundreds, um, the fifteen hundreds and the sixteen hundreds, there's this thing in Europe called the witch hunting craze in Europe. And uh essentially, when something bad would happen, they would blame some person in the village. And it would usually be some unmarried woman, um, that, you know, other women in the village didn't like. And, you know, they spoke about her and they're like, oh, she's casting spells on our children. She's making them sick. And they would, you know, they would basically burn her as a witch, you know, or they would put her through some trials. And King James, um, the first actually wrote, the guy who sponsored the King James Bible actually wrote a book called uh Demonology or Damenology, uh, where he talked about how to um, how to uh uh determine whether somebody's a witch or not. And this is, of course, when he is trying to still maintain his um, the, the loyalty of people to him as this authority on Christianity. So that was kind of how he, because there's no Catholic divine right of kings anymore. So that witch creating, hunting craze is still going on in Europe at this time. It's kind of fading out, but um, when things go bad, people will sometimes blame somebody in the community and call them a witch. And so that sort of thing is happening because what is going bad during King William's War for people living in um uh, British colonies? What's, what's the obvious thing that's going bad? Olivia, did you want to respond or anybody? I mean, they're just
Like, it's the conflict, I guess, like the conflict that's going on around them.
Right, the conflict, the Native American raids, you know, which are joined in with the French and just the general chaos, which of course is going to cause an economic depression. And so people get in a mood to um, to start blaming people for being, you know, and and again, this is um, uh, it's a mirror of what happens over in Europe, uh, you know, for about a century. Uh, and yes, Ethan, what were you gonna say? Ethan?
Yeah, hold on. Um, so I just have a question about, it's like, did the whole accusing witch thing ever really go beyond Salem or?
Um, it, it, it's, it one becomes, I don't want to, I don't want to steal too much thunder from
Okay.
Nathan and uh, uh, Max, but Salem will become kind of one of those embarrassing episodes, which is actually going to be a precursor to something that, there, there's going to be like a, a counter, there's going to be a reaction to it. So um, I will actually hold off on answering that question until
All right.
we get into um, the, the after effects of the Salem witchcraft trials. So um, Nathan and Max, um, did, I want to see where you guys have like focused in your research. Uh, like, some people in their research focus on why it happened and the after effects. Like, what are the various theories as to why it happened? And then others focus kind of on that series of events within it. Nathan, um, or Max, actually, since you have your mic on, um, where is your focus with your research?
I focused on the proceedings and the why, and then I wrote a little bit about
Okay.
the after effects and
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so Nathan, um, where's your, where's your emphasis on this?
Mine's mainly on why it happened. And then I kind of, after the first initial trials, I kind of like summarized like the middle part, and then I just did the aftermath.
Okay, great. Well, I, it looks like um, this is kind of, kind of naturally hash itself out in terms of, I'm gonna let Max kind of uh dive into the, the events and like what happened. And then Nathan, we're gonna jump over to you. And you're gonna talk about the theories as to why it happened and um, and then the after effects. So Max, I'll let you start.
Uh, all right, well, I'm going to, I guess I'll just start with the actual trials then, how about that?
Well, what caused the trials? Like, what do the four girls do? You know, give us that little snippet there. Um, and then we'll go into kind of how this all turns into, you know, like this religious hysteria uh within these purit, this Puritan.
I go all the way back to, I go all the way back to Samuel Parrish showing up in Salem. If you want me to start there, I'll do that.
I mean, like, this is a, this is an important topic, but we don't want to get into the weeds too far, like, because again, you know, but give us a summary, give us kind of a, a quick summary up until we get to the four girls. And then we'll kind of, we'll, we'll, we'll drill down a little bit, so.
Okay, all right.
Pick over to up until the four girls.
So before the Salem witch files even start, and before anyone starts accusing each other, this dude named Samuel Parrish shows up in Salem. And Samuel Parrish, he shows up on behalf of the Putnam family. Uh, that's part of the why. I'm not going to talk about that yet. But he shows up with his wife, three children, a niece, and two slaves from Barbados, John Indian and T- and Tuba. And his children are actually, hold on one moment. Okay, I don't remember who's the niece or who's the kid, but anyway, Parrish wants power in the congregation, blah, blah, blah. That's part of the why. And at the same time as he's showing up and trying to become a priest, Betty Parrish, Abigail Williams, and Anne Putnam, uh, they start talking to Tuba, who is a Barbados slave.
Okay, and they're, by the way, those are girls, right? Those are the little
Those are girls. Those are girls.
They're all little girls, ranging in age from nine to thirteen, and there's another girl named Elizabeth Hubbard as well.
She's not here yet. She'll get here though.
Right.
And it's, believe they were talking to Tuba about voodoo tales, but you know what? Whatever. And in January of sixteen ninety-two, Betty and Abigail start having weird, strange behavior in, which includes like fits of throwing and screaming and, you know, spazzing out, going crazy. And they can't figure out why it's happening. So the doctor just blames it on demons as the last resort. And
Well, of the time, yes, and very popular of Europe too, yeah.
Genius. Genius idea right there. And so after having it blamed on demons. With pressure from Samuel Paris, Betty, Abigail claim have been bewitched by T Tuba and two other. Uh marginalized, I guess you could say, members of the community, Sarah Good and Sarah Osborne. Sarah Good was a beggar and Sarah Osborne was romantically involved with an indentured servant. And they don't go to church regularly. So that's part of religious man, fanaticism here. And that was the accusation, if you wanna switch over now.
Yeah, so let's, let's go to the trial. So the, they, they basically saying, we're being tortured by these demons, by these spirits and. These two ladies are involved along with T Tuba. And so uh the, you know, there's, there, the Mayflower Compact had said separation of church and state, but. They kind of forgot about that and now it's, they're putting people on trial for religious offenses, so. Go ahead and tell us kind of about the trials. Um and again, we could go on and on forever about this, so we wanna kind of keep it. Um to the, the most important points, but uh there are definitely some interesting stories out of there, which I would love to hear if you've got them.
Uh, I have some weird ones, but. All right, yeah, after the accusation, uh magistrates show up and they start. Interrogating the people who've been accused and they start with T Tuba, who initially she pleads innocent, but. Probably under pressure from Samuel Paris as a slave, she eventually breaks down and says that she had like. Dreams about making deals with devils and she saw more people making deal with devils and. Most of, and she just starts accusing people. So the magistrates have enough evidence to go full witch hunt. And they start talking, taking people to trial. And then during the trials, the accused are forced to. Defend themselves with out counsel from spectral evidence, which is literally just. Like marking, it doesn't, there's no evidence, it's just hearsay.
Spectral evidence, yeah, that's great.
Yeah. And those who confessed to be witches, which they probably weren't. And named other supposed witches were actually spared by the courts. But those who pleaded innocent got tortured and killed, which is kind of a twisted inverse, you would think. But then on June second, Bridget Bishop actually becomes the first to be convicted and killed.
Okay, and do you have any stories from like when they were in trial and what the girls would say and uh or like? Just any, like, any of the people who died, like, what, what they refused to say and what they said and stuff like that? Cause there's some. Moments, there's some, you know, pretty powerful dramatic moments in the midst of all that.
I don't remember his name, but there was a guy who was accused of being a witch. And he refused to say if he was either innocent or guilty. And there was no pleading the fifth back then. So they couldn't, when they couldn't get him to talk, they just started putting rocks on his chest.
Right.
He wanted him to speak and he never did, he just died from being crushed by rocks.
Big giant stones, yeah. Yeah, and so he was, he was crushed to death, yeah. Um, anything else on the trials and executions before I hand it off to Nathan?
Um, I have. George Burrows, who was a minister and George Burrows was actually, he was a pretty important death because when he was. On the gallows, he recited the entirety of the Lord's Prayer perfectly. Which kind of shocks people because they thought he was a demon and so he just comes out and says the entirety of the Lord's Prayer. And that throws people off a lot from this whole spectral evidence accusation thing. It, and that's just a good little story, but.
Um, anything about the hysterics of the girls during the trials, like what kind of stuff they did?
What kind of stuff they would do during the trials, hold on, gotta flip through here.
All right, if uh, if you, if you want, I can come back to you after uh Nathan kind of jumps in and. Uh gives us some of his details. Cause.
Yeah, I do that, I'll have to do a bit of reading here.
All right, no problem. All right, so Nathan, um and if you, oh, and I see some hands here, so Ethan, go ahead with your question.
Okay, so um I actually have more detail about the guy who got squished by rocks. So um, his name was Giles Corey and he wasn't accused of being a witch, he was like held in contempt of court. And he wouldn't uh present evidence, so they kind of squished him until, you know, he died and he literally. I think my quote said more weight whenever they tried to say, will you have anything to say for the evidence and all that?
Okay, all right, uh excellent, that was an excellent contribution. And then Valencia, you have your question as, or, or your comment as well, go ahead.
Yeah, there's a theory that um ergot poisoning from moldy bread caused the behavior of the girls. And it gave them like psychotropic uh effects.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if Nathan has that, but I was going to ask that question um uh later, so excellent. You, you, you kind of anticipated one of the things I was gonna ask. So we'll actually come back to what you just mentioned in a minute. When uh we kind of, you know, let Nathan give his version and then uh we talk about like what could have caused this. There are various theories about what could have caused this. So um uh Nathan, uh if you would pick up from that point. If you have any cool stories from the trials you wanna add in, you know, it's kind of like uh, you know, your, your intro and then, and then head into. You know, effects, why, all that good stuff, um that, that would be great.
So like, start out like. You know, like, like ended the trials or?
In the midst of the trials, if you have any cool stories, cause there are some really, you know, dramatic moments uh. I- if you want, or if you, you can just kind of move into what we had talked about earlier.
Um, I don't really have any like stories, I just have names of people that were killed or executed, I guess. I mainly just summarized it, but.
All right, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um. I'll just start from like this point, I'm not sure if this is right spot or not, but like T Tuba many accused confessed and the trials eventually just overwhelmed the justice system. Just by how, because so many people were saying people were witches and had to go through court. And so eventually the governor in like sixteen ninety-two established like the Court of Oyer and Terminator to decide and hear the cases. So when it goes through like the normal justice system. And then um Maxwell said the first convention, I think, and then against Bridget Bishop. Um, and a lot of these women and men would be executed in Gallows Hill in Salem Town, which is like a famous spot now. And these courts were like really unfair to the people in them and mainly was just. If you were suspected of it, they were just like, mate, because of how many there were, they're just immediately say you're a witch and just execute you. Um, very unfair, unfairly, it wasn't really, they didn't really have any of the like. Fairer processes we have today.
That, yeah, testimony of these little girls, like everybody's like, oh, they're children, they're innocent, you know, um so. You know, they, they must be telling the truth and like literally you have between a hundred and seventy-five and two hundred people in jail. So many of them awaiting execution. Um, uh and so you, like you were saying, we, about twenty people are executed. And another five of them die in prison awaiting uh execution before somebody steps in and kind of puts a stop to the hysteria. So uh who, who ends up stopping this? You know, because it is becoming kind of a huge, you know, it just keeps spiraling and, you know, all of these people are dying. Uh, and why do they stop it?
So this guy named, I'm not sure if I'm saying his name right, but Cotton Mather. He was arguing that witchcraft charges had to be like as fair as regular charges, you can't just say someone's a witch and then execute them. And he was just arguing that there should be evidence for it and they had to be just as fair as the normal trials. Which would eventually lead to the governor getting rid of the courts that went through these trials, so it'd be more fair.
Okay, yeah, so um uh and then, so there are two brothers, um Cotton Mather and Increase Mather. Uh who uh basically uh, you know, are leaders within this Puritan colony. Who basically kind of put a stop to the hysteria and like you just mentioned, um uh. You know, Cotton Mather said, hey, we need to have more evidence beyond this spectral evidence from the girls. And then um. Uh in sixteen ninety-two, Increase Mather's, and these guys are both creatures too, uh said that it was better for ten suspected witches to go free. Than for one person who was uh um uh unfairly accused who was innocent to um uh be, be killed. And so um I see hands here, so before you continue Nathan, I'm gonna let these people ask questions, so Trinity, go ahead.
I have like one of the stories of what the girls did in the courtroom.
Oh yeah, go for it.
Um, I don't remember which trial it was, I think it was uh Goody Corey's, but. Basically, uh one of the girls is yelling that there was like a black man standing next to her, like whispering in her ear and telling her what to say. And anytime that uh Goody Corey would like lift her arms out, all the girls would move their arms out, like she was controlling them. And like holding them there and every time she'd drop her arms, all the girls would drop their arms too.
Yeah, that, that, that is a great story. Um, thank you for sharing that. Uh Elizabeth, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just had a question. So I understand like how the first three women, um T Tuba, Sarah Good. And Sarah Osborne, but how, how did it spiral to eventually being like two hundred people in jail? I just, I didn't really understand that, sorry.
Um, either Max or Nathan, I'm gonna let you guys uh uh go for the answer before I say anything because.
All right. So when you got accused of being a witch, the only way to really get out of being uh convicted of it. Was to say you were a witch and then uh. Claim someone else was witch, you would name other witches. And so that's how it spiraled. People would be, end up in court and they just name people, different people who had nothing to do with it.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's how.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, I, I, I say stuff and I'm, I'm trying to hold myself back, but go ahead, um.
And yeah, and that was a big flux of people coming through the courtroom and it, it just backs up. Cause you can't do that many cases a day really, so.
Yeah, it's like when they bust somebody who's like a drug dealer and they say, okay, we'll give you a reduced set if you name the other people in your network. You know, like if you've ever watched Breaking Bad or like, you know, Narcos or whatever. Um, and so it's a very similar sort of thing, so. They'd be like, okay, you've been busted as a witch, now confess, who else is a witch? And so then of course, they're just trying to save their lives. And so they would have to, you know, name other people and then suddenly these people get dragged in before the, you know, court, you know, they're like, what did I do? Um, Ethan, oh, I'm sorry, Faith, you were first, uh Faith, go ahead, what, what was your uh comment?
Uh, I was curious, so was it, excuse me, so chaotic that just people, if you didn't like the other person, you just accused them of being a witch? Like, did it get that bad? Cause I've heard about that, but.
You are hitting one of the theories. So Valencia had theories with her, with the uh ergo uh stuff in the wheat. And you are also hitting one of the other theories, so let's, let's hold off on answering that. I mean, Max, it seems like you wanna say something, but I was gonna ask Nathan this first, so let's hold off on answering that. Uh, yes, the, the whole, if you don't like somebody, can you, you know, or if you, you know, yes, yes, that is absolutely. One of the, one of the critical questions here, so you, you hit on one of the, the central questions, so we're gonna come back to you in just a little bit. Ethan, you have your hand up.
I had uh something to say, well, not directly about the what Salem witch trials, but it's like in my, or, in my English class, we're reading about the crucible. That, you know.
Yes, yes, John Proctor is prominently featured, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to know how accurate that was to the actual events, like is there any tidbits that are? Different or dramatized?
Yeah, I mean, because the, the crucible goes into, you know, like possible romantic, you know, uh.
Yeah, between Abigail and.
Right, between Abigail, uh Putnam and uh John Proctor and then she gets rejected and so she's mad and so. That all is pretty unsubstantiated, like if you look at the primary sources, which are mostly trial records. That's, you know, that, that's all speculation. So Arthur Miller really kind of um, you know, takes a lot of liberty, a lot of license. But the crucible does hit on some of the really important, you know, things, but I kind of find how. John Proctor yelling at the end, you know, cause he wanted to save his good name, you know, like it was all about his good name, you know, I, I don't know if I find that incredibly believable. But um, you know, Arthur Miller is trying to criticize um the anti-communist stuff of the nineteen fifties. By, by making this comparison to the Salem witchcraft trials in the crucible where he, he keeps kind of using that as a way to. Well, you know, say, oh, the HUAC hearings and the McCarthy hearings are like the Salem witchcraft trials, you know. Uh, so he throws in a lot of stuff that is, is, you know, more where he's trying to. Criticize what's going on at the, at the time, you know, through his retelling of the trials, so.
Okay.
It is not necessarily a really historically accurate, uh but it does kind of hit some of the big stuff that is important.
All right, all right, that's all I had to say.
All right, yeah, and then Autumn.
So did this only happen in Europe and colonial America or did anything similar happen in other parts of the world too?
Um, you have to have a large enough concentration of European people who are churchy. To get witchcraft stuff going. So in a lot of um, of the colonies around the world. There aren't a large um pot, there's not, there's, they're not what we call white dominions. And again, that's AP Euro stuff. There's only certain areas of the world that are going to have enough white people to have like a possible witchcraft trial. Australia's one, um uh Canada is one, uh of course, the British colonies in North America are one. Uh, and I don't recall hearing of any other stories from other parts of the world. Uh, it's an excellent question, but. Um unless somebody can find one, it would be probably very, very, you know, esoteric, you know. One of those things that isn't usually emphasized in history. Um, but uh, but yeah, great question. And Kenzie?
Yes, was there a defining moment or event that really stopped the accusations? Or was it just an eventual fallout where people just stopped?
Okay, we're, you, you, you're asking another really important question, which is actually part of the whole. Why and what effect does this have? So Nathan, I'm gonna come back to you now. Um, you have this, this uh question uh. Uh that was asked earlier about um possible motivations by people, you know, to, to do this, you know. Could the, could adults be, you know, doing something here because they didn't like certain people? And then you just had Kenzie's question as wa- or uh as well, so I'm gonna let you start addressing the, why did this happen? And the various theories as to why this happened.
So um, from what I've read about, there was like, living in Massachusetts at the time was just not fun. The living standards were really horrible, Massachusetts was really cold, there were um Native American tribes that would graze sometimes. There was um the King, the King William's War that happened recently and there was just a lot of stress on the colonists. And usually, like Maxwell said earlier, whenever Europeans got stressed about anything, they didn't really understand why it was happening, so they would usually just blame Satan. Um, which would lead to them trying to figure out who's a witch and then they would eventually. Just choose someone generally based off stereotypes of what women should be like and they pick someone who's not that, like a single woman.
Right.
And um, of course, there's other reasons. I've read that some people think just the cold and how crops seem to fail. In those types of areas, whenever the crops have failed, they would pick someone to be a witch and that's how they would blame them. There was the bread thing.
Yeah, so this is what Valencia brought up earlier, the ergo poisoning, uh what is that theory?
Um, I think it's mainly just, they believe that like.
Well, Valencia, do you wanna, do you wanna chime in and, and refresh everybody's memory on what you said earlier? You refresh that because it is kind of, we've talked about so many different things, it's hard to remember.
Uh, yeah, so basically they, there's a theory that um it was caused by moldy bread.
So when you, when you take the wheat and you harvest it and you store it, um this mold could sometimes set in and this ergo mold. What does it, what, what are the side effects of this mold?
Uh, hallucinations and basically things that uh LSD would cause.
Okay, and that is an interesting theory, so Nathan, um uh, what, what's your evaluation? Do you feel like that's a, a, a theory that um could potentially explain uh what was going on? That these girls were, you know, just victims, innocent victims of ergo poisoning and were having hallucinations?
Um, that could be one, I read mainly that it was about that um, they thought that Abigail Williams had like Tourette's and she was having fits. And the other girls just mimicked her to either make fun of her or just because they could. And the other girls just mimicked her to either make fun of her or just because they could.
Okay.
And like, yeah, that could be one too.
Okay, um, there's two other big theories. Um, and one of them was uh a part of a question that Kenzie was asking. Which is, um, what if somebody in the town of Salem didn't like somebody else? What what, did you read anything about possibly adults um being involved in what the girls were saying in court?
Um, not really. I never really read anything about that.
Max, did you happen to catch that in your research as well? I mean, there's so much on the Salem witchcraft trials that, you know, it that. Like, it's very easy to, you know, just kind of go down one ro- road and not see some of these other theories that are out there.
I've probably got what you're looking for. So in Salem, Salem Village specifically. There was Salem Town, which is a port city, which was much larger. There were two large families. The Porters and the Putnams. The Porters were these big rich merchants and the Putnams were uh small farmers. And what's interesting about the accusations during the witch trials is that most of the people who were accused. Were enemies or not on good terms with the Putnam family. So a big theory is that the Putnams were influencing either Abigail Williams or Ben Harris or whoever. To point out people who were not well-liked by the Putnams, just to get rid of them. So they could, you know, get their businesses going or whatever.
Okay, excellent, yes. And uh Nick Wilder, I saw you had your hand up. Uh, did you wanna ask a question or add a comment in on that?
I was just going to add, I suppose, that um the adults would probably intervene or just kind of support certain claims. Based on if they just had petty arguments or just just generally didn't like someone that were as accused. And they would back up the children as evidence, possibly.
Yeah, so so what both of you are saying is that the adults could be coaching these girls and saying, hey, you should be looking at so-and-so. And then the girls would, you know, so, because, you know, these four girls are are basically, you know. Causing mass chaos and disruption, you know, with almost two hundred people in jail. Uh Zach, what did, what were you gonna say?
I don't know if y'all have already answered this, but um, did they, did they ever use it like politically rather than just like, oh, I don't like that person, call him a witch? Would it be like, oh, this person is the local, I don't know what they would call it at the time, like the mayor or the secretary or something, and I want their job. So I'm gonna have somebody accuse them of being a witch. So once they're gone, that, you know, I I can, I can kind of rise up through the ranks.
Okay, wow, a whole bunch of hands went up when you said that, yeah. Um, Max, did you wanna um comment on that? Uh, cause that really goes back to what you were saying about the Putnams, but also I I have a li- an additional little, little twist that that reminded me of. But go ahead.
Uh, yeah, but it, that was what the Putnams did. They didn't like the porters and they wanted them out of Salem and they wanted their property. So they would accuse people who worked for the porters or were the porters. But besides just politically, religiously, people did that a lot. Uh Samuel Paris wanted to be the priest and he wanted to own the Rotary, which is a building owned by. Uh, the church at the time. So he likely pushed the girls to accuse people. So that he could gain influence within the church as some kind of weird conspiracy scheme he had going on. Samuel Paris literally caused all of the problems for Salem. I just kind of wanna point that one out there.
He is, he is the 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 evil mastermind in your, in your version of how the how the ball goes, right? Um, you hit on something that.
Not necessarily, but.
I know, I'm just, I'm just, you know, being kind of funny there, but um, you hit on something that was very important, which I think goes to Zach's question a little bit. Is, yeah, you might have people who are going after people because they want their position, but also because they want their property. Uh, so for instance, if you owned a piece of property uh that somebody who had access to the girls wanted. An easy way for them to get control of it would be to throw you into the midst of this uh, this, you know. Chaos that is going on, you know, with with the witch hunt. Uh Olivia, you have your question, you have your hand up? Go ahead.
Um, I didn't have a question. I just wanted to know, I know Johnson mentioned earlier about how they kind of forgot about the religious freedom. Kind of thing. So I didn't know if they like changed the government at all after this, cause I know it was kind of a big event.
Just remember that the Mayflower Compact is, like we mentioned earlier, is not an actual constitution. Like, you know, like the the frame of government in Pennsylvania uh or the fundamental orders in Connecticut, which actually set up. Like how a colonial government was gonna work. It was just like an agreement on how the particular town. Of, you know, Plymouth was going to function. So um, and and religious freedom was in there because. Only forty percent of the passengers on the Mayflower were actually part of that separatist pilgrim movement. And the other half were just people who were coming to the new world, you know, trying to make make a go of it. So um, that was in there kind of for that reason. But of course, the pilgrims will, would, you know, uh gain influence. And kind of start ignoring that pretty quickly. Um, Kenzie?
Well, I just wanted to say that um, that was Faith's question that you answered, the one about they could accuse people if they are mad at them. But um my question was about like, was there like a certain event that ended it? Like, did it come to a stop on its own or was there like a?
We're we're, we're getting to it because we're we're talking about the theories of why right now. And then we're gonna talk about how this makes the Puritans look and how it makes. Uh, and it goes back to what the Mathers were saying and why they put a stop to it. So yes, it, like we mentioned earlier, the the cotton mather and increased mather. Put a stop to it, and it's because they realized that it is doing something to the credibility of the congregational church. And the civil authorities as well. Um, and Ethan, did you have a question?
I just um wanted to touch up on the whole ergo thing. I think the reason how it causes. Those hallucinations is that the fungus itself, when it kind of digests the sugars, it produces these alkaloid organic. Compounds as a side product. And those alkaloid compounds can mess with brain chemistry. But mostly, they usually just cause abdominal pain, like um basically symptoms similar to dysentery and.
Okay, which again, you could.
High fever.
Yeah, you could consider that like a, like an attack by a demon. Oh, she's hurting my stomach, she's hurting me, you know, that kind of thing. Uh, which did happen during the trials. They would say that, you know, they'd all scream and fall down and say that so-and-so was hurting them with with the demons. Uh, and then Trinity, real quickly, cause we're, we're, we're spending a lot of time on this, but it is an important subject, so I'm trying to kind of manage time here. But Trinity, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to say that when I was younger, I read in a book that Tituba would like stand in the kitchen with all of the girls and like. Tell them stories about the tribe that she was from, or maybe it wasn't tribe, but like all of the, where she was from, all the practices that they would do.
Yeah.
That were kind of like not Christian or religious or whatever.
Right, no, that's voodoo, like, and and of course, that would be considered by by Christians living in Salem, that would be considered witchcraft. But like, that is like, you know, out and out, like total, like, you know, that's the devil's magic kind of thing. Uh, so uh, the last theory, and again, I'm just trying to kind of hurry along because of time, that hasn't been mentioned yet as to why. Is that the girls were afraid of be- getting in trouble. So um, they had gotten caught doing these little rituals with Tituba, cause they were, they were curious, they were interested. They wanted to get boys to like them, you know, u- using the little voodoo magics or whatever. And then, you know, they got caught. And so they're like, no, no, the she made us do it. And um, the uh, i- in, this was all, you know, other uh witches attacking us. We weren't, we're just innocent victims. And then it just kept spiraling. And of course, they got high on their power. Uh, but these four little girls, like, you know, caused mass chaos um and lead, you know, and twenty people died because of them. Uh, so that take, takes us to the bigger question. And the bigger question is. What effect is this going to have? This is going to be one of those things that when our founders look back on it, like they considered it an embarrassing episode. Uh, which cotton and increase also, you know, like, and this goes to Kenzie's question as to, you know, who stopped it and why. These are the authorities in Massachusetts, kind of the, the governor slash leaders of the colony. And they basically step in and say, okay, we've gotta stop the executions. If there better be more evidence. Because they realized that something was happening to their credibility, the the credibility of the church, et cetera. So either Max or Nathan, do either of you guys wanna answer that? What is the bigger long-term effect of this? Or anybody wanna just?
Well, I mean, increased mather, oh, what, what do you say?
Is it when you put people on trial for religious offenses and you execute them, and then people look back on it and they say. Gee, they got executed because some little girl accused them of being a witch and that was it? That was all the evidence? What does that make people think maybe we should have a rule about, which we talked about earlier?
Separation of church and state, that's what.
Oh, okay. So we look at, when we look at, you know, the Bill of Rights and we look at the First Amendment and stuff. This is gonna be one of those primary motivations for um separating church and state. They're gonna be a, well, look what happened in Salem. We really don't wanna give, you know, uh authority, you know, civil authority to religious officials. We've gotta keep the two separate. Um, so that is like the big takeaway, the big long-term effect. Anything else, Max, that you wanted to add?
Uh, I have, there's effects, the many, many years down, like. Just in the court system of the current United States, the Salem witch trial has actually held a lot of precedent. When we were uh coming up with like guarantee to the right of legal representation. Uh, right of cross-examination, presumption of innocence, and those were, the Salem witch trials were brought up a lot. When they had to come up with those ideas.
Yes, so this goes down in the memory of the the colonists and the founding fathers. Who a good eighty to ninety years later are going to be trying to figure out how they're going to structure government. And this is gonna be one of those cautionary tales. Uh, we don't wanna go down this road again. And of course, it does, what does this do to the credibility of the congregational church? I mean, what would you think?
Crashes it. The, everyone thinks they're uh weird voodoo bigots now, not voodoo, but.
Yeah, it does. It it's it's just like what happens to the credibility of the Pope, you know, in, when the Reformation happens, uh et- et cetera. I mean, et cetera, you know, I mean, there's so many parallels uh from European history, but um, yeah, it it really does kind of uh. The credibility of the religious authorities. Um, uh, and anybody wanna? Put their two cents in on what theory do you think is the most persuasive as to what motivated these girls? Was it them not wanting to get in trouble, the ergo poisoning, uh being coached by adults? Uh, which one of those is is the most persuasive? Uh, Kenzie?
I think the one about the um mold is probably the one that makes most sense to me.
Okay, so you don't feel like the girls would just do this on their own? Um, uh, the, or, okay, alright, excellent. Um, Nick, what would, what was your uh thought on that?
I honestly feel it could be a combination of all three potentially, like, I can definitely see um. If like girls in that situation kind of like do it, telling the little white lie, oh, that she possessed us or whatever. Um, and just kind of spiraling out of control and then like trying to keep it up because they don't know anything better. And possibly parents taking advantage of that situation to get their enemies um in trouble with the law and all that. And possibly also adding to the convincing, possibly the poisoning adding into that as well.
Okay, um, alright, and uh, let's see here. Um, Zach, uh, what did, what did you wanna add?
I think most likely it was a a political thing that the parents used to gain, I mean, it is the new world. They, everybody was kind of vying for a foothold. The, all of them are act, you know, are refugees from the, the uh, the religious things going on in England. So they're all fighting and scrapping in this, uh, you know, relatively new place to them. And when, when the, the, you know, America's kind of known for being resource-rich, land and water and timber and everything. Especially in that area. So I think most likely, they were probably just fighting over who is gonna uh establish. Their, their power of their family in this new place. And that the easiest way to do that was when a kid got sick or, you know, a child was acting weird. That rather than actually thinking that it's a, it's a witch, that it's just an easy excuse to uh, to advance your family's uh. Status.
Yeah, yeah, that, 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 you're making a persuasive case there. Uh, and then Brayden, uh, what would you, what would you like to add?
Um, I think, I think it probably definitely started with just the uh, the kids not wanting to get in trouble. They were like, oh, she was making me do it, yada, yada. Cause I mean, I remember being a kid and like getting in trouble and I was always looking for an out. Um, so I think like that, that is a really good um, like, cause to it. But I think that as it developed and people realized that they, they could use it to target people that they, they may want to get rid of. Or whatever. I feel like once people, like, once that clicked, that they were quick to do it. And like that, that, that would explain why it got as huge as it did.
Yeah, yeah. I I am, I feel like all of you guys are making great cases uh for this. Nick, you still have your hand up. Did you wanna add anything? Or uh, or is it just that you had?
I for- I forgot it was still up.
Oh, um, this is a debate that historians continue to have, and we're not gonna solve it here. Uh, but uh, Max and or Nathan, do you guys, I mean, anything else you wanna add before we move on from this topic?
So I just, this is like completely unrelated, but when I was researching this, a lot of it reminded me of like the French Revolution, how bloody that was.
The, the hysteria, right, yeah. Just where it just like spirals out of control and people are getting accused, especially, you know, during the Great Terror. Yeah, I I think that there are some strong parallels there. Um, and then Max, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
Uh, I've got a little tidbit and a little story. So the behavior of the girls actually mirrors. This account of a Boston family that were supposedly witched. And the account is actually by Cotton Mather. So if they like got a hold of that account somehow, it puts a little more evidence towards the theory that they were literally just lying. To get out of trouble. And also, I have a little kind of gross story that. When they were trying to figure out who bewitched the girls, a neighbor suggested to Tituba that she bake a witch cake. Which is just a cake, but you put the victim's urine in it, and then you feed it to a dog. And supposedly, the dog would find who bewitched them. I don't know if they ever did that, but.
I mean, and like, you know, if you, if you just happen to be uh in the butcher shop and, you know, you, you happen to have some, some stuff that smelled good on your clothes. You could, you could end up being, you know, accused of witchcraft, you know, on, on that basis there, so um, yeah. I, the stories that come out of this are, that's, you know, funny. Um, Boyer, you had a, your hand up, go ahead.
So did this only happen in Salem or was it happening all through the colonies?
Um, either Max or Nathan, do you wanna quick answer that before I do?
Uh, this scale of it was, was really localized to Salem, pretty much. Because Salem is the big mistake. It's like, it was the huge one that happened. So unless you had like a lot of, as Dr. Johnson said, churchy, white Europeans in your area. This would not happen during, in anywhere else. So Spanish colonies kind of excluded. They didn't really do that, I don't think, but pretty much just Salem though.
Well, Spanish colonies would sometimes like go after Native American shamans for witchcraft and things like that, where they were trying to Christianize, you know. Native Americans, but again, uh, it, nothing a- at the scale like Max is saying. Did that answer your question, Boyer? There are like little, small, isolated incidences, but they're, they're not historically significant enough for us to kind of really focus in on. Alright, and Faith, I saw your hand as well.
Weren't there some witch trials in Europe as well, or am I completely mistaken about that?
Like, from the mid fifteen hundreds through the sixteen hundreds, there was a hu- a witch hunting craze in Europe. And uh, that, and that's where King James, remember I mentioned that King James wrote Demonology. There was also the Malak- Malichus Malacharum, uh, which was written by some Dominican monks on, on how to. Uh, you know, find a witch. And of course, since the Catholic Church was active in some of these parts of Europe where they were hunting witches. Uh, it would often be the Inquisition that would um conduct trials. Uh, and of course, they were, they were experts uh in torture and um extracting information, et cetera. So yes, there's a whole rabbit hole we could go down uh when it comes to that in Europe as well. All right, yeah, yeah. Excellent question. I think that pretty much covers it. Great job, Nathan and Max, you know, very important topic. So in the interest of trying to continue to get things done, we're going to move on. To the Tuscarora War. So. This is a big war with Native Americans in North Carolina and it really, it's a, the Tuscarora tribe was well-established in, in the. In kind of the, the, the Atlantic seaboard area before you get to the Appalachians in North Carolina. And as whites continued to, you know, acquire land, the Tuscarora were, you know. Getting encroached upon further and further. And of course, there were some attempts to enslave Native Americans, you know, these slave raids. That were done by white settlers as well. So the Tuscarora villages all united. And under Chief Hancock, they attacked the whites. A, a new settlement that actually had just been built by German and Swiss settlers called New Bern. And they just massacred hundreds of European men, women and children. And so of course, the Europeans are going to call together the militia, they're going to call in soldiers. And this turns into a full-blown war, just very similar to what happened with the Powhatan in Virginia. And crops were burned, plantations were destroyed. Most of Western North Carolina was in chaos for two years until Captain James Moore and the Colonial Militia. Aided by the traditional enemies of the Tuscarora, the Yamasee, defeated the Tuscarora. The Tuscarora Confederacy was broken. And, well, I'm sorry, it wasn't a Confederacy, the, the tribe, but the, the group, the, the agreement between the villages was broken. And those who were not killed or captured went north and actually joined the Iroquois Confederacy as the sixth tribe of the Iroquois. So that is the Tuscarora War. And of course, it's kind of funny how we played Native American. Tribes off against each other and then the tribe that was allied to us suddenly finds itself in the crosshairs. And so a similar situation develops just afterward in South Carolina. Because the Yamasee who were established in that area end up getting. Encroached upon by South Carolina plantation owners and people who are trying to establish themselves. And so they then form a Confederacy against the Europeans and in seventeen fifteen, they attack. And there's kind of, you know, mass chaos and killing across the western frontier of South Carolina. Again, hundreds of European men, women and children are, are killed. And of course, there's reprisals by Europeans against Native Americans, many of whom are non-combatants as well. And the, it, it, it actually looked like the Yamasee were going to win. Because they had such a big, not only did they have their own tribe, but they had built kind of this Confederacy of other tribes. But the South Carolinians were actually able to bribe some of those tribes to drop out of the Confederacy and betray the Yamasee. Which will lead to the Yamasee, you know, being destroyed. And of course, it is the very large and powerful Cherokee nation that is the critical betrayer of the Yamasee. And of course, we know what's going to happen to the Cherokee later on, the Trail of Tears. So. This divide and conquer strategy that was used by Europeans is very effective. Nick, did you have a question? I saw your hand there.
Yes, so this kind of, they've done this song and dance like multiple times with multiple different tribes. What's like the main like just difference between all these like different wars? Is it just that, just the tribes in particular and where they're located? Or is there?
What happens to the tribes, like for instance, Tuscarora go to and join the Iroquois, the Yamasee are going to win actually until the Cherokee betray them. But you will see that it, the, the, the light bulb will finally come on for the tribes and there will be somebody. Named Tecumseh later on who will say, okay, we've got to stop betraying each other. We've got to find, form a massive. Like Native American Confederacy against the whites. So when we get to that point in history, we'll, we'll discuss that. But yeah, it takes a while for them to realize that they're being kind of manipulated and played like this. Because they're so involved in their own little local politics with the rival tribes that they have, that they can't see the bigger picture. And Lauren, what were you gonna say?
Um, I was just, I don't know if you said anything, but you said that they were bribed and I was just wondering what they were bribed with.
Guns, you know, other things that they found valuable. Some of the Yamasee territory, they would say, hey, you know, if you betray them, we will give you this big chunk of territory that they currently hold. As, as a, as a reward kind of thing. So it's just, you know, the various negotiations would, you know. I mean, there were all kinds of things that were offered, but generally speaking, it was goods like guns and, and liquor and other things that only Europeans could produce. And potential, you know, rewards at the end of the war, like, you know, a big piece of territory, which again, they would lose later. Alec, go ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, so they bribed the Cherokees into betraying the other guys. Why would the Cherokees betray them? Why wouldn't they just wipe out, you know, the white people and then take what they have?
Just remember that in the air, in that particular time period, you know. Not only do these tribes have to worry about these new people that have come in, these whites. But they also have to worry about their traditional enemies, which they have been, you know, battling with on and off for centuries. I mean, if not thousands of years. So from their point of view, who is the, the bigger threat, so to speak? I mean, oftentimes from their point of view, they consider the whites not to be as big of a threat and they consider their, their traditional enemy to be the bigger threat. So often they will just betray their, their traditional enemy in order to, you know, finally end that long. You know, standing threat. So great question, Alec. And then Zach?
It's like the, the, the enemy of my enemy is my friend kind of deal going on with the.
Yeah, and it's sad, it's sad because the, the, the Europeans use this strategy over and over and over again. And it, and it works so often and it's really unfortunate. A lot of these tribes have their power destroyed, not just by whites, but by other tribes. And then Autumn?
Um, I know the colonists always kind of had an upper hand on the Native Americans, but do you think if they really wanted to, they could have defeated them eventually?
If the Native Americans wanted to, yes, because of sheer force of numbers. Also, their warriors were. You know, hunters by trade and in just very capable warriors. So as they acquired the better weapons, as they acquired the guns, even with bows and arrows and spears, they were still, you know, formidable warriors. Yes, if they had united in large enough numbers, they could have wiped out the entire colonies. You know, like various colonies, the, the, the number of Europeans living in those areas. Was in the thousands, but it wasn't that large. I mean, the, the Native Americans were definitely like larger in numbers in spite of. The mass dieings, you know, from the various waves of disease. So, yeah, if they had only united, and of course, one person will try to do that and you'll see what happens. I'm not going to spoil the story ahead of time. So that is the Yamasee War and that takes us to. Somebody that both Brayden and Dylan have, and I saw both Brayden and Dylan were logged in. Looking to see if Dylan is still logged in, doesn't look like it. But Brayden, do you want to kind of get us started on Blackbeard?
Yeah, so first I have like kind of a summary of his legacy and then I've got like. One in-depth story of all of his exploits.
That's fine, because again, you know, like we spent a long time on the Salem witchcraft trials, which was good. Cause it really has a lot of important stuff in it, but we have to kind of be time-conscious. So go ahead.
Yeah, all right. So, so it's believed that his name was Edward Teach. That's, that's the more widely accepted name. But, you know, I, I forgot what it was, but there, they had a few different ones for him. He turned to piracy when the War of Spanish Succession end, ended in seventeen thirteen. He operated outside of North Carolina, capturing ships across the Atlantic seaboard and in the West Indies. His boat was called the Queen Anne's Revenge and he had an island in the West Indies that kind of served as like a little base. He was notorious for true cruel treatment of captives that he took, although. I, you know, it's been a while since I researched it, but I believe that he, like, there's actually no evidence of him. Like killing or torturing anyone, which is, is kind of insane to me that he developed this.
It's a matter of debate among historians, actually. Some historians go for the more bloodthirsty. And then of course, this is how you make your name as a, as a history professor. You go into something that's kind of well-accepted and you'd say, hey, wait a minute. You are wrong. The primary sources provide no evidence, you know, and so, so it's been disputed by other academics. And so it's, it's a matter of debate, but yeah.
Let's see, he retired in seventeen eighteen and moved to North Carolina. Where he was actually pardoned and treated like a celebrity. He would go to like dinners with all kinds of nobles and stuff like that.
There aren't nobles in, in, in the colony, but like.
Like people of high status. I'm, I'm not great with words.
No problem, no problem.
And then he, he failed to give up piracy and was hunted down and killed by Lieutenant Robert. Robert Maynard in seventeen eighteen. And according to legend, he would tie burning fuses to his beard when he was in the presence of enemies. Which I thought was really cool.
Yeah, makes him even more scary. I mean, it's like, it's almost like, once you get a reputation, you know, if you just exploit it, like. Has, I don't know if this movie is, if anybody's seen this, but has anyone seen The Princess Bride?
That's one of my favorite movies.
Oh, okay. Dread Pirate Roberts, remember how Wesley, he's like, yeah, all I had to do was, you know, basically use the reputation of the Dread Pirate Roberts. Cause everybody was so afraid of them, you know, so it kind of, you can, you can weaponize the fear that people have of your, of your reputation. But did you have any else, anything else that you wanted to share on Blackbeard?
Uh, I, I do have like this, the blockade of Charleston that he did. So I've got like a half a page written about this and then I've got a quote for it. Scott has his hand raised.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the list here. I don't see it. Weird. Oh, no, I was just not scrolling up enough. Scott, go ahead. What was your question?
If he didn't torture the people he captured, what did he do with them?
You want to answer that? Go ahead, Brayden.
Well, I, I assume that, like, I know they, they weren't treated like well, but they like just may not have been like tortured. But, you know, there, the only thing is that there's no actual evidence that he did. So he, he may have, or it may have just been like people were so scared or like they, they told them to tell people when they. Were released to that they were tortured or all this stuff. So, I mean, it, like, there's a lot of ways for it to be. Like misinterpreted.
The Dread Pirate Roberts effect, yes. But like at this time, like people were killed and, and killed in painful ways. So I would not, I like, even though there are people who push back over the lack of evidence and the primary sources, I would. I would find it very easy to believe that he did kill people in some creative ways to establish that reputation early on. Ethan, did you have a question?
I was just saying, like, I did get into a lot of the, you know, pirate practices. And yes, I mentioned Blackbeard a lot when I was researching for the slide Pirates of the Caribbean. And one fact that I actually found is like specifically on capturing ships, which they didn't really always do. Most of the time, guns were not really fired. The people on the ship were kind of just scared and said, okay, taken. They kind of just most of the time spent loading it on the other ship. A lot of it didn't really end in shooting because pirates, pirates weren't really target ships that could attack back.
Yeah, and it's like, do we want to get into a battle where we would like basically have people trying to board our ship? And we would be fighting hand-to-hand on the deck and then once the battle's over, they're going to execute us in these, these, these creative horrible ways. You know, which they feared. Or could we just give them some goods and just they'll go away and we'll all be safe, like we won't die?
Yeah, also like since the thing is like they lacked military training, so the really only thing they had. To help them was brutality as to like make up legends to make people scared of them. So they wouldn't actually have to fight. Cause when it comes to a military power, they would probably lose.
The, the, I, I just, it always reminds me of the Dread Pirate Roberts effect. So yeah, it's just kind of funny. How that, how that is actually true to real life to a certain extent. So Brayden, anything else? Go ahead and finish. The Charleston, the blockade of Charleston.
Yes, so in late May, or late May seventeen eighteen. Blackbeard's little group of warships, they blockaded the port of Charleston, which was located in South Carolina. Over the next five to six days, roughly nine ships were stopped, looted and captured by Blackbeard. One of which was headed to London with a large amount of prominent Charleston citizens. Blackbeard held these people hostage for medical supplies and. Should he not acquire what he desired, he would kill all the hostages and burn all the ships that he took. Just really, really make a big deal out of it, you know? So three pirates were sent to collect the loot, but their ships capsized and it actually took much longer. Then upon further delay, Blackbeard moved eight ships into the harbor, which actually caused mass panic in Charleston. But as it turned out, two of the pirates had just like wandered off and gotten drunk. And so that, that caused this huge delay that caused him to move in, threaten everyone. But in the end, the, the bargain was, both ends of the bargain were kept and everyone was safe.
All right, Faith, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah. So buccaneers were the ones who were kind of independent and then they stole everything from themselves, right?
Right, yeah. As opposed to privateers who work for a particular country, yeah.
Yeah, so did buccaneers steal stuff from the privateers who just stole stuff from other people? Cause I assume that they would, but like, did they take that sort of risk? Cause I feel like privateers would be more of a threat.
I mean, just on a, like, I can let Ethan chime in on this and I can let Brayden chime in on this, but just as a general rule. Privateers are considered more dangerous than buccaneers. You'd be kind of suicidal to attack. Privateers generally because they were backed by the power of like, say for instance, the British. Or these various navies out there. So Ethan, did you want to add something?
Oh, yeah, specifically on when it comes to buccaneers versus privateers, usually lower, like buccaneers wouldn't want to touch privateers. Because privateers actually most likely had military training or were actually in the Navy employ of a country and were from the Navy. So the privateers had a lot more to work with than buccaneers.
All right, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, they were definitely considered more dangerous. Excellent question though. Brayden, you said you had a quote, so go ahead and share that with us.
Um, yeah, so this is by a dude named T Warner, wrote this in seventeen twenty-four. And it says, threatening that if they not send immediate the chest of medicines and let the pirate ambassadors return without offering any violence to their persons. They would murder all their prisoners, send up their heads to the governor and set the ships they had taken on fire. So that, that just kind of like summarizes like what he was demanding.
Right, and the fear, and the fear that was inspired by his reputation. So this was a guy who basically just realized, hey. If I establish this reputation, I can live large for a long time. And of course, you know, the, the tying the fuses to his beard kind of thing. You know that he is like trying to scare people, like you, you know, he's trying to like live up to the legend, so to speak. And he lived large and he was successful. This is, this is the great American pirate, you know, because he is considered an American colonist. Because of his, you know, basing himself out of North Carolina. And then, you know, he, he retires, he's telling all of his tales to people at dinner parties and having a good time. But then he gets an itch for the old adventuring life and he goes out and he finally gets caught and executed by the Royal Navy. So just one of those great stories out of our history that just, you know, it's one of those things you just kind of need to, to be aware of. It's one of those things you just kind of need to to be aware of. Um, uh, the great pirate from American history. And of course, there are, you know, ones from other countries, but we're not gonna spend as much time on. But um, that's Blackbeard and excellent job, Brayden. Uh, and that takes us to. Whenever I put this painting up, people are always like, what's happened to him?
I know this story.
Yeah, when when I teach AP Euro, I mean, people are just like, oh, you know, like, I I I hear the collective gasp from the class.
I think one funny, like, the accounts of what he was like are just the strangest.
Like, I can't even believe he he lived as long as he did.
They said he didn't have a drop of blood in his body and he was like impotent from birth.
The whole drop of blood thing cannot be right. Um, but this right here is Charles the Second of Spain. And this is what happens when you inbreed for too long. Um, the royal families wanting to keep the bloodlines from being. Uh, you know, polluted by the uh the commoners, so to speak, uh, intermarried with each other. And of course, when you intermarry in a small group for too long, genetic um deformities are gonna come to the fore. And so um, the son of Philip the Fourth, Charles the Second, um, which was known as the sickly king. And was so feeble and was so sickly that he uh, that people thought he'll, he he's gonna die. Like, they always were like thought he was on the edge of death. Um, his jaw was deformed, his face was deformed. He had very um, kind of, he 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 just was very shy, you know, tried to stay away from people. Cause people were just kind of horrified at his appearance. Um, and he he just had a very difficult time. Even just doing basic functionings like, you know, breathing and eating and all of that. And so um, uh, there was this constant s- swirl of speculation. Around who's gonna get the throne, because what can't he produce?
An heir.
An heir, yeah, he cannot produce a son. And I see two hands, so uh Zach, you were first, go ahead.
Is this, is this the Habsburg jaw?
Yeah, this is the Habsburg jaw right here. But I mean, the Habsburg jaw, you can see it in the painting of Charles the Fifth, and it's prominent. But this is like the the Habsburg jaw on steroids, basically. It is like, it it's it's deformed. You know, it's it's beyond kind of that that prominent jawline that many members of the family had. And then Jacob, what was your question?
I had a question. So when I was doing research for my slide, the Aust- the Austrian War of Succession, it mentioned that um, Charles the Sixth. Who kind of, his death kind of started the whole thing. It said that he had tried to bid for the Spanish war. Is it because that Charles the Second was the king of Spain at one point, they tried to bid for the throne of Spain?
I'm about to get to that, okay? Um, so you are anticip- I I I will answer your question just like in two seconds here, actually. Because we're we're uh kind of uh getting into what is going to be, now you, did you say War of Austrian Succession or War of Spanish?
Yeah, the War of Austrian Succession.
Right, okay, so that, again, that involves the Habsburg family and the the Bourbon family, so we're about to get to this, so um. Louis the Fourteenth has been so successful, like, he's like the great French king. You know, he has restored France to like this position of power and influence. That he is actually going to challenge the um, the Habsburg dynasty. Uh, as as kind of a new rival dynasty. And so in Europe at this time, really, it's all about. It's not about thrones of countries as much as it's about families. It's about certain dynasties that are collecting thrones as kind of part of their family's uh, you know, uh, power structure. Uh, and so, of course, the Habsburgs had been uh very dominant for a long time. Uh, but the the fact that Louis was able to kind of um, uh, uh, you know. Gain so much power that he could take on like a lot of the rest of Europe and and basically fight them to a draw in the War of the Grand Alliance. Meant that his family was now coming to prominence and that family was called the Bourbon family. So really, what this is about is a battle between two families. So Jacob, to answer your question, yes. Uh, this is related, uh, because this battle between these families is going to continue and it's going to spark another war later. Uh, and they're gonna be involved, but there's also other factors that are also involved in the War of um, uh, Austrian Succession. Because there's another rival family that emerges, uh, the Holenzolerns, um, which we'll get to in a bit. But um, basically, kind of for our purposes, uh, he Louis the Fourteenth. Uh, decides to take advantage of the weakness of Spain by attacking the Spanish Netherlands, which were on his border. Um, and um, you know, he gets attacked by others and we're gonna get into this when we get into the War of Spanish Succession. Um, but um, as uh speculation swirls around who will be the heir. The rule of primogeniture, which had been around since like, you know, the very beginnings of of medieval Europe. Basically says that the throne goes to the oldest male heir. And because the family trees were kind of complicated at this point and they were, there was intermarriage between the families all the time. Daughters from one family going to, you know, marry sons from another family. Um, there was a pop, there were two contenders. Um, Philippe of Anjou was the Bourbon contender. Okay, so Louis was pushing him and Charles of Austria was being pushed by the Habsburg family. Which, so it's either Austria is gonna get control of Spain like it used to have uh back when Charles the Fifth was, you know. Uh, in charge of the Habsburg family, or France was going to get um, basically kind of control. Ish over Spain through um, you know, its family connection. So uh, that's really what this is all about. And that, of course, leads to the War of the Spanish Succession. When uh, Charles the Second um finally dies. And so um, uh, basically. It's all about who's who's scary. Um, that's how these European wars work. Uh, you know, it's like, people will be on one side, but then if one power gets too powerful, everybody will betray them. Because they don't want that one power getting, becoming like a superpower. And so what really scared everybody else was the possibility that France could get control of Spain. And create like this French superpower, because Louis the Si- Louis the Fourteenth was already, you know. Like, holding off most of Europe on his own, uh, and and kind of, you know, France was already considered really strong. So if they got control of Spain, it would be a disaster for everybody else. And so there's a new grand alliance that forms um under uh William the Third. Uh, and this includes um, the Habsburgs. Uh, and uh, um, uh, basically, this will be, will. Um, you know, and William the Third, I'm talking about William of England, William the Third of England. Because again, we always focus on the English angle, because these are English colonies that are involved. Um, but uh, he basically uh gets the Austrian Habsburgs to join um. English, which again is weird, because they've been enemies in the past. Uh, and then Portugal jumps jumps in as well. Because they're uh worried about a potential, you know, French-Spanish ally or, you know, uh, power block, whatever. And uh essentially, um, we're not gonna get too far into the weeds on this war. This is, this is AP Euro more than it is, um, you know, our class. But uh, there's a brilliant general, um, the Duke of Marlborough, uh, who, from England. And um, uh, he's on one side and then the other brilliant general on the other side is the Austrian Prince Eugene of Savoy. Um, and uh, well, actually, they're both on the same side, sorry. And so the the combination of their brilliance is able to kind of uh counterbalance. The the French who are are, you know, kind of dominant during this this time period. And so um, they drive back a French invasion of Austria at the Battle of Blenheim in seventeen oh four. And with the support, support of the Portuguese, British troops invade Spain. Louis has to sue for peace in seventeen oh nine. Uh, but the, they try to impose really harsh terms, so he restarts the war and the war continues until seventeen thirteen. Now, in the midst of the War of Spanish Succession, William the Third will die, which will almost cause the alliance to collapse. But Queen Anne will basically continue the war, because she is the um, there is no male heir to the throne. But she is like kind of the oldest daughter, so in the tradition of Queen Elizabeth, she kind of takes the throne and um, uh, continues things. And so this is why the war in the colonies is known as Queen Anne's War. Let me just double check and see if anybody has this one.
It's mine.
Okay, alright, so Trinity, um, and we have five minutes, so um. I will let you talk and I'll try not to interrupt you too much. Uh, go ahead.
So I did some research on the Spanish succession and it was happening at the same time during this war, from my understanding. And basically, they didn't want the French in Spain under one monarch because of the superpowers or whatever.
Yeah, this is, this is an extension of the War of Spanish Succession in colonies, yeah. So like, because the French and the British are on opposite sides and fighting over in Europe. Their supporters in the colonies are fighting in the colonies. Because often you can trade, you can do some horse trading. If like a bunch of land gets taken in the colonies, then you can trade it off for gains in Europe. And there's kind of like this big, you know, thing where they decide who's gonna get what at the end and the treaty at the end. The more territory you gain, the more you have to bargain with. But go ahead.
So from my understanding, um, the war was mainly between France and England. And like Native American tribes would switch sides depending on who they thought would like win the war. Um, one of the major battles was the raid on Deerfield, where um, the French and Native American forces burned. Half the village and uh killed forty-seven villagers. And they took a hundred and twelve settlers captive and basically took them to Montreal, Montreal, Montreal.
Yes.
Um, some of them died and some of them were murdered along the way and sixty were later ransomed a family and community. Others were adopted by Mohawk families and became assimilated into the tribe. Um.
Yeah, I mean, it's to show you how chaotic life was on the 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 kind of the edge of the colonies. Because you could be sitting in your village one day and everything could be fine and then suddenly Native Americans could appear out of nowhere. And this was because they were allied with the French and just completely wipe out your community, uh, what happened to Deerfield. Um, but go ahead.
Another major uh war battle was between Spanish Florida and the English province of Carolina. Car- Carolina.
Yep, the Spanish attacked uh South Carolina, yes.
Mm-hmm. Uh, the American colonists engaged the French on the base known as Mobile in Alabama with Indian allies on both sides. There were no major territorial changes, but it nearly wiped out the Indian population of Spanish Florida and parts of Georgia. And destroyed Spanish networks within Florida.
Yeah, it does early weaken the Spanish in Florida.
Mm-hmm. Um, effects of like this, uh, the French colonists in the Wabanaki Confederacy. Which were a Native American principle of five oligon key nations.
Yeah, they were Algonquin, yeah.
Yes, sought to prohibit the expansion into Acadia. Um, the Wabanaki Confederacy Confederacy tribes resided. In Newfoundland, Canada, to the Merrimack River Valley in New Hampshire, Massachusetts. Um, English colonists could not defend the intense raids from the French colonists in the Wabanaki Confederacy. And the conflict resulted in economically destructive raids on settlements. These raids were continued by Native Americans until the end of the war with some help of the French.
Yes, and so um, like, and I have my little pointer here, if you guys can all see it. Um, what you, what uh Trinity was just referring to there is this island, which we call Nova Scotia now. Uh, but the French actually had possessed it since like early colonial times and they called it Acadia. And there was a powerful tribe there called the Abenaki. That was actually what the tribe that Samusette was from. And um, the Abenaki basically were part of this, you know, raiding Confederacy. But the British were able to take advantage of, uh, and colonial British, you know, people who are fighting for the British in the colonies. Um, they basically were able to take advantage of their superiority on the water and they were able to take the city of Port Royal. Um, and threaten this very important Brit- French fort right here called Louisbourg. Which was um, kind of like, it controlled the access to the Saint Lawrence Seaway. So um, excellent job. Um, and uh, do you have anything else? Uh, before I quickly talk about the, how this all shakes out in terms of who gets what.
Um, I do have a little more.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, the war ended in seventeen thirteen with the Treaty of U- Utrecht.
Utrecht, yes.
Following a preliminary peace in seventeen twelve, the treaty prohibited any further instance of unifying the French and Spanish crowns. Some terms were ambiguous in the treaty and concerns of various Indian tribes were not included, which would allow for conflicts later. Later on in time, uh, France ceded the territories of Hudson Bay, Acadia, Newfoundland to Britain. While retaining Cape Breton Island and other territories in exchange for Philip the Fifth, the tenth, the fifth?
Philip of Anjou, yes, yes.
Yes.
Um, Philip the Fifth, yes.
To become the King of Spain.
Yes, so um, the Bourbons get what they want. In the uh, but they have to give up a bunch of territory to get it. So the British are going to get their hands on most of Acadia, which will become Nova Scotia. They will get their hands on Newfoundland as well. Um, and uh, so there there's. That is part of the the horse trading that goes on and we're not gonna get into all the, all of the the exchanging of territory in Europe. In the Treaty of Utrecht, because again, it's just not relevant to our class. Um, I did wanna quickly, before I end, ask, uh, let's see here. Cody, are you still with us? Um, I was gonna ask a question if you were. Connor, are you still with us? I see you're logged in, but I don't, I haven't heard from you all this whole time. Um, Jarrett, what about you?
Yeah, I'm here.
You're here, okay. Let me ask you a question so you can get some credit here. Um, so what kind of effect do you think this is going to have, um, this exchange of territory in North America? Cause really what we're focused on is how does this affect North America? Um, who comes out like way ahead in North America? Like, is it either the British or the French? Who gains territory? If you're looking here, the British is red and and you can see on my little pointer here is pointing to uh this island which they acquired. And this big one that they acquired too. So who gained territory out of, between the British and the French? Jarrett, are you still with me?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, can you, can you answer that question real quick?
Uh, I only heard like half.
Okay, uh, sounds like your connection's not great. Um, who comes out uh on top in this war in terms of territory gained in North America? The British or the French? All right, well, it looks like your connection is is kind of getting uh a little too hard for you, make it hard for you to comment. Uh, Mary Cooney, uh, did you want to answer that question at all?
Um, Britain.
Okay, so Britain uh comes out way ahead and this is gonna increase British power, especially in what area? That will future, kind of in the future, be uh under the control of Britain, up in the north, to the north of what will become the United States.
Me again or someone else?
Uh, if if you, I mean, like, what area is up above us? Like, what country is up above us?
Canada?
Canada, yeah, so it'll increase their 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 uh control over what will become Canada. Um, and let's see, I'm just looking for anybody else who hasn't said anything yet. Uh, Lizbeth. Um, uh, what um, what were the effects, do you think, of all of these Native American raids? On these border areas uh in our um thirteen colonies? Lizbeth, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, I'm sorry.
Uh, I just was trying to help you get some points there. What what do you think were the effect of these Native American raids, um, like these border areas?
Um. Didn't like it made like driver, like, there's like a battle between them?
Well, it's going to definitely, it's gonna definitely make the um, the people who live on the western side of these colonies. More hostile. Every time we have one of these colonial wars and Native Americans in alliance with the French. Attack uh settlers, it makes the settlers even more hostile to the Native Americans than before. So you're gonna see the effects of some of that hostility later on. Um, but uh, great job, everybody. Uh, it looks like we're out of time, so we're going to end uh our session for today. And we will pick up with Colonial Society when I see you guys again. Alright, so thanks, everybody for being a part today. And uh, I've got you guys, oh, I see hands. And uh I've got you guys, oh, I see hands from Zach and Faith, uh Zach, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, did the, did the Native Americans understand they were part, part of this global like proxy war? With the blood feud between the Habsburgs and the Bourbons, or did the French just hand them weapons and say, go, go shoot the people that are encroaching on your land?
That to them, their their concerns are very provincial, like they're, like the French are like, you know, um hey, we need your help against these enemies of ours. Uh and we're willing to trade you this, so they're not aware of like, I mean, and if they are, it's only through casual conversation. But they're not really aware of kind of this larger, you know, global kind of thing going on between these two powerful dynasties. That are trying to, you know, gain the upper hand in Europe, and so uh it's it's unfortunate because um they're gonna earn themselves a lot of. You know, enmity in within the in the uh colonies by, you know, just kind of swooping in and just, you know, massacring. Like an entire village of people, um so excellent question, and then Faith, what were you gonna say?
Um mine pertained to, it was Louis the Fourteenth, uh wasn't he called the Sun King by his people, everyone thought that he was like the greatest person ever?
We we talked about that in one of the classes, and I forget which one it was, but um yeah, he was called the Sun King, he's the one who built the palace at Versailles. He kind of makes France into this this big power in Europe, um uh and so, yeah, he's uh definitely. Um you know, uh and and it's after a devastating war in um Europe called the Thirty Years' War. Um uh where his uh he his predecessor, Louis the Thirteenth. And Cardinal Richelieu had, you know, played a decisive role in the outcome of that war, and it was all about, you know, whether Protestants or Catholics. Were going to kind of come out on top in Europe, and that's again, that's a whole nother story, it's all, but after kind of the 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 absolute devastation. That that war wreaks across Europe, which is, which is, it is, it is actually a very devastating war. Um France kind of emerges out of the ashes of that to kind of become the new big land power. And again, a lot of that, the credit goes to Louis the Fourteenth and his aggressive moves, but of course, he's going to tax the. The heck out of Europe or his people to to build Versailles and um to fight all these wars. And so uh his, his uh successors are going to end up paying the price. Because once you start laying these new taxes on everybody, you don't wanna stop collecting them, and and of course, the misery is going to continue until. The French Revolution against Louis the Sixteenth, so it is interesting how it all connects together, but we are, we are out of time. So um thanks again, everybody, for uh an excellent session and all those great questions you asked, uh and I will see you in class on Tuesday.
Alright, bye.
Bye.